And we are recording.
The Cedar Woolley Planning Commission meeting for today, April 16th, 2024, is called to order at six. Whose clock do I use?
That one.
Wall.
That one, 6:33. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Commissioner Huggins. Commissioner Devoine.
Present.
Commissioner Freiberger.
Present.
Commissioner Fatisi.
Present.
Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Saxon.
Present.
Commissioner Fernet, present. Okay. Has everyone had the opportunity to read the consent agenda, meeting minutes, from the February 20th meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yes.
Is there anything you would like to say, starting down there with Commissioner Devoine?
I agree.
Okay.
Nothing to add for me?
Nothing, nothing here.
Nothing here? I expect you to have something.
Well. This was my only thought, is that the Planning Commission discussion information items could be said Chair Fatisi welcomed new Commissioners Saxon and Matthew Devoine, just because that's just what's in there is the agenda listing. So. Not super critical, but.
And that's where?
At the very end of the minutes on page three.
Page three. Oh, I see.
Danielle, say that again, what were you?
That Chair Commissioner Fatisi welcomed new Commissioners Saxon and Devoine to the Planning Commission, yeah. Just restating it.
I'm happy to make that change.
Anything else, Commissioner?
Nope.
Okay. With that, can we have, with the slight changes, can we have someone? Anyone like to motion to approve the minutes with those changes?
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February 20th, 2024, with the minor modification just stated by Commissioner Freiberger.
We have a first from Commissioner Fatisi, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Freiberger. General public comments. I'll open the general public comments after I read the following.
You want to take a motion to approve? We already made the motion, but now we have to vote on it, right?
Oh, sorry, the vote.
It's okay.
All in favor of approving the minutes as corrected, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Got it. Rookie mistake.
Good.
I'll add that to my notes. General public comments. I'll open the general public comment after I read the following. Okay, here we go. Please keep comments to three minutes or less because state law prohibits the use of city facilities for the purpose of supporting or opposing a campaign or ballot proposition. We respectfully request that public comment not make reference to such matters. Written comments will be accepted by letter or via email at nmcgowan@cedarwoolly.gov. Attention, public comment. With that, I opened the public comment at 6:37. Is there anyone online, or anyone in the audience, or anything that needs to be read, or anything?
We did not get any comments in the mail or emailed to me.
Okay. And I don't see, I see one guest. Okay. With that, I will close, if there's no further discussion, I'll close the general public comments at 6:38. Now we're at public hearings. Tonight, our public hearing is on the proposed amendment to Chapter 2.90, Title 17, Cedar Woolly Municipal Code, and the master fee schedule to add regulations and permitting slash impact fees for tiny home communities. Prior to opening public, our public hearing, if you'd like to speak, please state your name and address, or any group or organization that you represent. We'll open the public meeting now at 6:39.
Quick correction, it's not a public hearing.
There's no public hearing.
Business item.
So it would be under, under F if we had any, so this is just the unfinished business. So, and at some point, we'll have a public hearing on the business matter right now, but right now, we don't have anything.
Oh, it says public hearing.
There's nothing on the agenda, though.
Okay, so now we move to unfinished business?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Unfinished business, that part opens at 6:39. Proposed amendments to Chapter 2.90, Title 17, Cedar Woolly Municipal Code. Now, I just read this, and the fee schedule to add regulations permitting impact fees for tiny home communities. Is there something you'd like to tell us?
Yes. Okay. So seen as an opportunity to encourage infill development targeted to low, middle-income sectors of Cedar Woolly's population, these draft regulations for tiny home communities are intended to provide a pleasant, more affordable housing option for Cedar Woolly residents outside of multifamily development that would be well-integrated with the existing built environment of its residential zones. This is the second presentation of the draft amendments for tiny home communities. So with my interns' help, I've put together a second draft of amendments for you that reflects the changes that were requested by the Planning Commission at the February 20 meeting. You'll see that we have greatly reduced the maximum allowable density for tiny home communities, as well as set the maximum property size for considering these developments at one acre. Density bonuses now only allow for a maximum of four additional units on site, with one additional unit being granted for a successful implementation of an individual, individual bonus category. We also added the option of a clubhouse bonus, reflecting the Planning Commission's thoughts on these developments needing to encourage more community space for the residents here to use for recreational purposes, given the small size of the residences. I apologize, I did not highlight the updates to the open space in red. That was a mistake on my part, but we did also adjust the ratio of open space to a one-to-six ratio of common space to private lots within a tiny home community. And the open space area minimum is now 6,000 square feet for every six private lots. We adjusted the minimum and maximum lot sizes to 900 square feet and 3,000 square feet, respectively, and adjusted the setbacks to match the setbacks currently applicable to regular residential development. So a front 20-foot setback, side of five, rear of 20, and if they incorporate a garage, 25 feet. We've drafted a new chapter to include in the Design Standards and Guidelines Manual specific to tiny home communities, and put together a draft of applicable permitting and impact fees for tiny home communities. So at this point, I welcome discussion regarding these changes, and ask that the Planning Commission recommend any necessary changes from this point, thank you.
Okay. Has everyone here had a chance to read through the changes that were made?
Yes.
Okay. We will open discussion on this. Commissioner Devoine, would you like to?
I had to comment today ahead of the amendments. Thank you for doing that. My first question, it said that there's a bonus awarded for a self-help committee which is defined in Section 17.04. I went to Section 17.04 to try and understand what a self-help committee was. I could not find it. I did a search through the whole, took that, forgive me, I just could not understand what a self-help committee was.
Okay, so.
May I?
Would you like an answer to that one first, before you start with your second question? Okay. So the self-help program isn't currently defined in Chapter 17, but there is, within the draft regulations, a definition added. So it reads, "Self-help program means a housing initiative in which a government agency, nonprofit organization, or other local community group utilizes a structured and systematic approach to assist individuals with creating and maintaining their own living spaces."
Thank you.
Yeah.
May I comment about the clubhouse? I just, I can't understand how the best I would, would help people with, with some rural housing. It seemed to me that a clubhouse would raise the price of being a, that a clubhouse maintain. It was just my thought, whether the amendment.
We can discuss that further, I think that that is a good point, it would probably raise the, the interest rate on the property. It was a thought, as far as with these residences being so small, and not having a whole lot of space to kind of call your own, to, you know, host parties, or have visitors here at your home, providing a space for people to be able to, to bring people into their community, and kind of have a space designated for that, but we can talk more.
Commissioner Saxon, you have any comments?
Yeah, I, there we go. The concern that I have with the, the tolerances for the setbacks, and then you have a minimum and a maximum portion of the lot within the lot, you know, for each of these homes, and I'm wondering if, for me, the math just isn't adding up, and if we could have like a site plan, maybe with, if we saw what it would look like to have, you know, four or five of these homes put on a half an acre, and then, you know, the maximum of, of what it would look like to have them on a half an acre versus an acre, because it, it just, it, it feels, I, I tried, like with my little architectural ruler and scale, to try to draw out, you know, four homes with a garage, and with a, like a community center of some type, and I could not figure out, like, just the, the concept of what that space would look and feel like, it, it felt like it was, a half an acre was too small still to get all of these, these units on there. And then the other question I had is, we said a permanent dwelling, and, and when I, like, Google permanent dwelling, it, it doesn't really, like, define, like, you know, materials used for the building type, it still could, you know, be like a park model, but on a permanent foundation with permanent utilities. And I, and I felt like some of the theme from our last meeting was trying to get away, you know, from, from a park model, or, or anything that was mobile, and, and to be like a stick frame, or, or something of that, that nature, and so permanent dwelling is, is, is a, we're moving in the right direction, but maybe defining, you know, like we are with defining what kind of plants and trees, and bushes, and things that we can, can put on the property, maybe expand a little bit more on what, what does it mean to be a permanent dwelling? Because I feel like that, that can kind of be maybe a little bit of a gray area still.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be happy to put that within the Design Standards Draft Chapter that we put together. I think that's a good idea, specify what materials we would expect for these to be built out of, prevent them from looking like a trailer. Yeah.
Anything to prevent it from looking like a mobile home park.
And as far as the site plan rendering, I'm happy to do that as well, see if we can kind of give some variety of examples, you know, small versus large. Yeah, visualize.
I, I did the same thing, tried to draw it all out.
Yeah.
That was a month ago, though, so I kind of lost, but it didn't quite pencil out.
And then, because we're adding the, the 20-foot setback in the front, I think, was a, was a change from, from the previous meeting, too, and so that, that restricted, you know, a lot of space as well. Feels like a lot to get on a tiny half acres.
Anything else?
Nothing, nothing else.
Can you give a brief overview of the different permit types? I've never asked this question. So we have a one through six. What is it, a cost differential, or?
Mainly the difference is complexity.
Okay.
So you're type one, type two, those are very basic administrative application types. The further you go up, three, four, five, six, that's going to be, you know, you're adding in hearing examiner approval, you're adding in, you know, maybe a comprehensive plan change, something like that, that would be your most complex, you know, multiple steps to the process types of permits.
So there's, there's a tiny home community in Bellingham that I took a look at, and I'm not too sure what the questions have been at the counter. My guess is they'll, they'll want to put as many as they possibly can on the smallest amount of space. The setbacks in the Bellingham project is barely a couple of feet, and I've seen pictures of what they had going on in Seattle, so I think we still have a heck of a lot more work to do on this particular area for tiny homes, because a lot of the tiny homes are already pre-made. There's a couple firms, one actually that I'm working with in Marysville, that the reason they have wheels on them is because it's a totally different type of residence, where you don't require certain types of permits. So I want to make sure that when we put this together, that we incorporate that language that doesn't permit something, just because it has wheels, that wouldn't be required, that, that comply with whatever we put together. That's just, that's just a base thought, but there's so much here to, to go through, and I will totally admit, I haven't gone through every single word. Next.
Commissioner Freiberger, you have anything to say?
A few things. This is just a quick one I wanted to mention, could get cleaned up later, but since I noticed it, on page 53, the language there still said PRD instead of THC, so I thought, just, it is, let me go there a second, tell you exactly where it's at.
On page 53?
That's correct, and it is right down at the bottom, the, under 17-120-100B. So the very bottom sentence on that page. It should say, "The Homeowners Association Authority shall be established in restrictive covenants applicable to all property within the THC."
Can you give me the section again, sorry?
Yes, 17-120-100, it's the very bottom of page 53 of 72.
It says PRD on the right side.
Second to the last sentence, very bottom of the page.
Got it, thank you.
And then I also noticed that on page 47, where it talks about garage and parking space, their off-street parking. So I wanted to ask you a couple of things for clarification here. We don't specify whether the garage can be one car or two cars. Is this separate from, is item four garage setbacks? I know that's specifically talking about setbacks, but item G, then, under that, is the minimum of one parking space, so it, that is minimum required parking for the, the tiny home. There is no, a garage is not necessarily required, is that correct?
Yes, a garage is not necessarily required.
So we just put in language in case they do want a garage? So it could be a single-car garage?
It could be, yes.
Correct? Okay. So in that case, under the Design Standards on page 63, it says two spaces are required, so I just wanted to make sure that they matched.
Okay. So I guess we should have some discussion on that, would we prefer these to have one or two parking spaces? Currently, under the off-street parking and loading standards in the municipal code, it says residential units require two spaces. ADUs are exempted from that, they only need one per our code. I think when Isaac was putting them together, he'd kind of tried to match the ADUs, so he was thinking one space, and I think that kind of got missed in the Design Standards that was put together here, so. What would we like to do? No, speaking on behalf of the community, something that I hear constantly is, there's not enough parking, there's not enough parking, so, you know, maybe that's something to think about here, but also thinking that these lots are small, they, I, I worry that having too much parking on each individual site would cause a claustrophobic failure. Maybe we could look at requiring that the parking areas be more of a community, more central-located situation, so we kind of have, have that set off to the side, to kind of have a specific place for them. There's a number of ways to design this, but.
Maybe an idea could be, because you've got lots as, as small as 900 square feet, but as large as 3,000, so maybe the smaller lots, like 900 square feet, set a threshold to, say, 1,500, could be one-car garage, and then the larger spaces, the 3,000 square feet, because the dwelling that's going to reside on that 900 to 3,000 square feet is also going to be much smaller, so you wouldn't want to be in a situation where your garage is bigger than your house.
Right.
And so maybe we, you could set some kind of parameters, smaller lot, smaller garage space, larger lot, larger garage space.
You know, tiny homes are exactly that, they're more of a studio-type layout, and they usually just single, it's not even a bedroom, everything's just in that one spot. So a lot that I've seen, they don't even have parking requirements, because a lot of, well, in certain situations, the population going through these structures are fairly transient, so I'm not too sure what we're really trying to accomplish here. I mean, I think that the, the different religious organizations that want to host things like this are going to have a totally different set of criteria than somebody wanting to live in one. I, I'm just not too sure where, where we're really kind of going here. It kind of looks like an ADU, but it's kind of not, and.
Here's a thought. To Commissioner Fatisi's point, I wonder if, we've had some interest expressed from the community regarding self-help, maybe doing this as self-help, would they be willing to come and, or, or even share with you? And you could bring it, like, kind of what they're looking for? Because we're looking at it from a different point of view than they are, and he's right, I, I think we're, we're looking at completely different things, like to Commissioner Saxon's point, a lot of these things are going to drive up the cost. Additional parking, garages, common areas, well, any of that stuff. I mean, you can't, you don't want to, we don't want this to be a mobile home park, but at the same time, if they're trying to use this for first-time homeowners, people who are in challenging situations, trying to get out of that, it's going to drive up the cost, the more requirements you add on.
Yeah. I'd be happy to contact Family Promise and see if they'd be willing to come, do a presentation, kind of, on what their thoughts are for these sorts of things. But I do want to reiterate that these regulations, we're trying to put together not for one specific project. So it'd be nice to hear from, from someone that's interested in doing something like this, but we also need to keep a broad perspective.
With that all being said, this is really no different than a mobile home park. It's almost identical, so why, why don't we just actually take a look at the mobile home park ordinance and combine them together? I mean, that's another idea.
Yeah.
I just don't see any difference between the Senate Mobile Home Park.
Yeah, I, I remember seeing in the, was it Title 15 Buildings and Construction, there is some specificity laid into what building materials can be used for mobile homes outside of mobile home parks, and things like that. I think with these, we want to create more of a community feel, so I had thoughts of, you know, maybe orienting these buildings around a common open space, trying to have it be more of a neighborhood feel, rather than a mobile home park, per se. Yeah, I guess, what are your thoughts on that, having a central open space, that all of the?
That, that's always nice, as a matter of fact, I've seen mobile home parks and RV parks, where, there's one in Bothell in particular, that has a small lake, so all the sites are, what do you call it, deployed around the lake, in more of a fan-like manner. So there, there's examples out there in other jurisdictions.
Yeah, I'm kind of envisioning something right now, you know, common open space, central, and then having your lots kind of around the outside of that, and requiring that these maybe be located where public on-street parking is available, that we, we could get away from requiring them on-site, specifically.
You know, I'm just even thinking where in town you would even deploy one of these. I mean, you know, I'm pretty savvy of knowing every available square inch, just from a real estate perspective, and there's some properties that are, that are fairly large that are still undeveloped, but I think one of the primary groups that have interest in this are, are one of the churches, so I have no idea, are they talking about taking over their parking lot? Or, I mean, we don't really have any, have they given you any specifics as to what they want to do?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember what the name of the church is, but the one I have in my head, they've got the church property, there's a parking lot, and then just south of it's roughly .5 acres in size, where they're looking at doing maybe five tiny homes there for their, kind of help, self-help program that they've got. But, yeah, like, I, like I said before, I'm happy to have them come and present something, give you more specific details on what they're thinking as far as their project.
So are they talking about potentially using a, let's say, a porta potty? I mean, are all these things going to be plumbed for water, toilets, power? That's a whole other discussion, and that stuff is not cheap to deploy, so in a, in a situation like that, you would still have to run a sewer line, you'd have to run water mains, you've got fire prevention, suppression, monitoring going on with stuff like that. So it's a lot more involved, and depending on the density as well, there, there's different requirements for, for instance, like, if you're going to run fire hydrants, it's a minimum eight-inch ductile iron main, and the last time I priced it out, it was about 275 bucks a lineal foot. Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. And that's not even saying sewer. So this could be a really pricey venture, so I'm not too sure what they want to do. I mean, are they just, is it a place where people are just going to go in and sleep, going to have outside toilets, maybe outside water, or, or whatever? So we're, we're lacking a whole lot of specifics that are really going to matter from a code standpoint.
The thought would be to bill these as a residential unit, the same way we do with ADUs, right? So, well, given ADUs do have the option of sharing with the primary residents, but this would be the primary residence in this case, so they would have their own sewer, their own power, their own water, et cetera.
Am I recalling correctly that they had a thought of wanting to put some? Am I recalling correctly that they had a thought of wanting to put some of these units, have them be on a chassis so they could be pulled out? And we nixed that idea last.
You remember that correctly.
Yeah, and if they want to do that, then they need to go the mobile home park route, I guess. And because that is not, so in a way, we already know that kind of the vision is differing here a bit. Because these are going to be permanent structures, not something that you can just get rid of if somebody trashes it.
Right.
So it will be an investment on somebody's part to put these in. But as you said, it's not just, we're not just targeting one group here. We're making regulations for potentially any interested party. I think the main goal would be to make it not so prohibitive, that nobody wants to do it. But at the same time, we don't need more mobile home park regulations. As Commissioner Fatizzi said, we could always tweak those if that was something that seemed more.
Right. The intention here is to have an entirely different product than a mobile home park. Do our best to kind of make this be its own thing.
You know, so so with that thought, and I was just, you know, on our ADUs, we have a minimum size. And I think it's like ninety square feet above two thousand. And that was for, I remember John.
Two hundred and five square feet.
Right, right, because it was above something. Since this is a tiny home, do we want to define that it can't be any larger than, let's say, two hundred square feet, which is a ten-by-twenty building? I mean, now we're we're looking at the flip side and we're saying tiny. And everything I've seen out there is barely seven, eight feet by fifteen feet. So do we want to define what a tiny home is?
Didn't we say maximum eight hundred in here?
Yeah. We did, yes, it's defined in seventeen oh four.
And then I had a moment of panic when I saw the lot size could be nine hundred. And I was going, how the heck is that going to work? But then you kind of covered that with the lot coverage couldn't be any more than fifty percent. Because I was thinking somebody could come in here and basically cover an entire lot with their unit and then be jammed right up on their neighbor.
Yep, up coverage. Lot coverage.
And setbacks, the setbacks also is the other one that really, since we didn't like the reduced, though possibly looking at some at some happy medium there. Because if these lots are pretty tiny, it's going to be a little bit difficult to get everything we want in the way of landscaping and everything in.
Yeah, just thinking on reducing the tiny home definition down to what you were saying, Joe, I feel like, I don't know, it it kind of, it's pretty restrictive. What would be the desire to have a, you know, two hundred square foot house? Yeah, it's kind of.
You know, I actually, I buy, I had a ten-by-twenty shed when I was looking at it. Yeah, it was plenty of room. Bigger than a jail cell.
I got one thing. So I stopped in over here at this tiny home builder in in the industrial park over here. His name's Eric Johnson, I believe. And I said, so what do you guys build here? And he says, we build tiny homes and offices and stuff. And I said, what are the prices? And he said, well, on wheels, they start at sixty thousand. And on concrete foundation, they start at two hundred thousand.
Wow.
And so I'm thinking, if if a builder comes in and he's got a lot, regardless of the size, he has to have like all the improvements you're talking about, the sewer, the water, the the heat, the, you know.
Power.
Power. And then he's got to build something. And okay, so most builders want to maximize their profits. So they're going to build as big as they can. So let's, now we're going to say, we want you guys to build as small as you can. Okay, that's fine, nothing wrong with that. But they they would have to be doing it out of the goodness of their heart or with the with some kind of government grant or something. Because it's not, they're not going to be able to, you know, make ends meet building something like this. And people aren't going to be able to afford it because you've got all the impact fees. By the way, somebody that I know just is developing their property, the impact fee for Cedar Woolley Public School is six thousand dollars. Okay, so let's add up all the impact fees. Let's add up the two hundred thousand dollar starting price. Let's say it's three hundred thousand. The price of the lot, another hundred thousand. And I don't see how it's affordable for anybody. And then when you're looking at these lot sizes, let's say, somebody says, I'm going to, I'm going to build a nine hundred square foot lot. Okay, so thirty by thirty is out because you don't have any setbacks there. So let's go twenty by forty-five. Setback in the front of twenty, setback in the back of twenty. Each side is five. That leaves you a house of ten feet by fifteen feet. That's a hundred and fifty square feet. That's smaller than we're allowing, right? Is it two hundred we started at?
Two hundred and five, yeah.
Okay, so I just, there there's so many things that just don't make sense to me. And I feel like if we really want to do this, it's going to take a year of studying this to to really iron out all the little details. And then we have to think about what kind of people are going to be moving into these places. If, I don't know what the track record is for Bellingham or Burlington. I think Burlington has tiny homes, they're, they call them. But I don't know what they call them, but they're basically little shacks.
Transitional housing?
Transitional housing.
I've never been there. So I I can't speak firsthand, but I hear secondhand that a lot of drugs happen in communities like this. Just throwing that out, that I don't know if that's going to happen here. But is that something we want to bring in? And does that elevate property values? Or does it deflate property values around that community? Those are just thoughts that are going through my head. And it started about two months ago when we first brought this up. And it's kind of, some of it's dwindling. I got to bring it back again, but.
You know, as a real estate broker, it would not, it would not be an amenity that is a value-increasing proposition to the surrounding residences. There's no way. Because it does bring a lot of stuff with it outside of even the density, I mean. Because we're looking at a high-density kind of solution for something like this as well. So no, it's not a, it's not a positive.
Yeah, just to go back one to the, we were talking about the garages and the setbacks. And, you know, you'd made a comment, I believe, already that parking's pretty limited, you know, in town, on the streets. And and if you were to have a teeny home community like this and you see one and a half or so people per dwelling, you know, that's for the minimum lot, you know, that's another seven to ten cars that we're putting on the streets. And then how convenient is that for those people that are like carrying groceries? Or, you know, that that I just, it would be great on the planning side to have parking included in the planning of of the units, you know, whether it's a garage at top, can we, how high can we go? Are we limited to single-story? Can we have two-story? And then if we're looking at parking and then adding square footage on top of the parking, you know, to accommodate a a livable dwelling, then should we really be looking at going up versus out in more of like a condominium or apartment, you know, type complex duplex? Maybe even if we want to have some kind of more green space? Because I just feel like with all the limitations that we're talking about with these setbacks and the aesthetics and 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 community spaces, which are all really great ideas, that we would maximize the livable and and more comfortable space, living space if we went up. You could get away with two stories, the way the regulations are written, maxed at twenty feet. Maybe we increase that. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We, I, it's kind of like, I have a girlfriend who, you know, her first condo in Red, Redmond, you know, real estate's pretty pricey down there. And, you know, their their first floor was a garage and a set of stairs. And then their second floor was like the living room, the kitchen and a guest bathroom. And then the third story was their bedroom. And it was, you know, probably no more than a thousand square feet with a with a two-car tandem garage. You know, but they had comfortable living space on each each story. So so maybe we could look at increasing the vertical limits to make a more comfortable space that's still affordable. Right, that's a good thought.
Can we backtrack? What what spurred this, what started this conversation on tiny homes? Anyway, what was the original inquiry?
Originally, it was Family Promise. So they they came in, had this project idea of doing a self-help program, get people into tiny homes just for starting, starting out, figuring out how to live on their own. And so the conversation went to, we don't have regulations surrounding these, but on the thought that, you know, we don't want to create regulations just for one specific project. So we'd put something together. And then, you know, the the state's mandates also kind of come into play here where they're saying we need low-middle-income housing options. But here is our council saying we don't want more high-density multifamily. So what do we do to find that in between? You know, the the price range for housing, I can't do anything about that.
Their deployment is very different than what we're trying to do here. Think of a regular parking lot, right? Where on one parking space should have a structure, then an open space, then another structure, another structure. They're looking at something totally different than what we're, we're looking at kind of like an ADU PRD type of code here. But what they're looking to do is very, very different from what we're trying to do here.
Yeah.
So do we want to do something that splits them out? To have a different class of tiny home village or whatever, where their their stuff is transitional. They're not going to, people are not going to be parking in what they're doing. They're probably going to be public transportation. And they'll want to get as many as they possibly can in the smallest amount of space. At least that's what I see in in other projects like this.
One other thing, infill seems to be the word that I heard, that we want more density. Well, we, you know, we've already got zoning, R five, R seven, R fifteen. And I don't know how we can just ignore that. But we already did when we said ADUs are fine. So now it's more like R ten, R fourteen, R thirty.
Right, yeah.
So that now we're saying, well, let's make it R seventy-five, R one hundred and fifty, and R three hundred. And it just, it doesn't make any sense to me. But as far as infill goes, ADUs make sense because that's good for the homeowner. They got a second income and it's good for someone looking for an affordable spot. And they could probably build it for a lot less than a community could do it. Just, just my feeble mind thinking. I I just don't want to see the city blow up like that.
It is true, there are a lot of things working against this proposal. So, you know, I'm happy to any any suggestions. But yeah, I've got some good stuff to work on. And I think I think it would be useful to take a field trip, too. I know we talked about that last time. I haven't been able to to get something scheduled. But I'd be happy to put something together for that.
I would love the field trip idea. And even if you want Family Promise to come and tell us more, I'm all ears. But I just don't see how it works without a whole lot more study.
Yeah.
And practical, you know, see it in person, like you say, or or lay it out.
Visual references, yeah.
And then we'd like to know what kind of, well, I guess that doesn't matter. I'll scratch that.
So as far as field trips go, our neighbor to the north, Bellingham, the city just bought, I think, a half-acre lot for close to a million bucks to move their transitional tiny home deployment down by the water, out to that site, close to Meridian. So that would be actually a really good start. Because I think that that's the density that I think that the church is actually talking about. And you'll get to see one actually deployed with people and what that actually brings to the mix. And it's only twenty-five minutes up the road.
Yeah.
And is there another one in Burlington as well?
What about the one that, at the end of Ferry Street? There's that, it looks like a teeny home community, the little, the green, they're all single-story homes.
Oh, I know that, they're very old.
Yeah, they're old.
They're in the forties or something.
Yeah.
Those are awesome.
There are.
I love them, but they're, you could walk from one roof to the other. So if, the three in a row.
Um, well, some of them, I I've, my kids have ridden their bikes through there. And we we went on a walk and I was curious since we walked around. And some of them are kind of duplex and some of them are singled out. And some of them are multi-story.
On Ferry where?
It's right next to the, there's the, the.
On the west end of Ferry or the east?
If you're going down Ferry Street headed east, and then the street ends and you have to take a right or a left. And it's literally if you just go straight, it's that little court, like cottage court or.
Okay, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, and there's like the storage unit. And then there's those new condos or apartments.
That's on township, though.
Yeah, township and and Ferry.
I was on the other side of Ferry, or other end of Ferry when you were talking, across the street from Herbs.
Yeah.
There's three little houses all in a row that look like they came from a Monopoly game or something. And, you know, that's, that to me is cool, but they're side by side by side and in somebody's yard. So that's like triple A to use that.
And yeah, they are, they're they're tiny, but that's what we're looking at, right? Tiny homes, tiny home communities. Those were part of the original plotted lots of the city of Cedar Woolley. So there are three thousand two hundred square foot lots. And you have the house about the size to fit. So, yeah, they're small, yeah.
Now, in the PRD ordinance, we can go as low as, I think, twenty-five hundred on the lot square feet.
Yeah, the the way it's written, there's a kind of an averaging that works into play.
Right.
You know, you can have a variety. It's low as two thousand five hundred square feet. But so long as combined, the average doesn't go below the minimum lot size for the underlying zone.
Now, looking at the impact fees, what's what's our average for, let's say, a single-family house? I think it's upwards of twenty-five thousand or thereabouts. I mean, a lot of builders base their development.
Ballpark, I wouldn't be able to give you.
On that, I mean, I know Mount Vernon is close to fifty grand for a single-family home. And I've talked to certain builders, they won't, they won't build in Mount Vernon because of that. Yeah, right, well, yeah, well, here we go. If anybody would know, it would be you. Is that true, though, right?
Yeah, of course, there's multiple reasons for that. But, yeah, um, yeah.
What is it, it's close to fifty thousand bucks, isn't it?
Um, I'd have to take a look, but, yeah, it's a lot.
It's a lot, yeah.
I mean, it's not cheap here either, so.
Let me do a quick calculation here just for an idea.
And I'm not picking on Mount Vernon. I just know that their rates are pretty up there. Kirkland and Bothell are just as bad, though, by the way. They're they're right up there as well.
What's more impressive is all the critical areas.
Oh, yeah, no, I know, we got a lot of water down there, you bet.
Yeah, buffer buy-down fees.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this might take a little longer, I don't have all the info. I was going to try to get you a closer estimate, but I don't have everything I need here to do it. So, but I think you're right around in the ballpark, around twenty-five, thirty thousand, yeah.
Per lot.
Per unit or per lot?
Per unit.
Per unit. Wow.
So for a single-family home, you need that, that's all your impact fees on top of the cost of the dirt, cost of deployment of utilities, the building itself.
So would you have, you pay an impact fee then for every teeny home?
You would, but that's how, that's how it's set up here.
That you put on the, on the plot, not just one fee for one, but each.
Each unit.
Each individual unit would get the fee. Yeah, and they're they're reduced kind of to match the way I've written them. They're reduced to match the ADU impact fees.
And that's what we did, we cut it down.
Cut it to, if you're under four hundred fifty square feet, thirty percent of what's generally charged for a single family. And then if you're over four hundred fifty square feet, then it's sixty-one percent of what you're generally charged.
And a lot of it's subjective, too. It's like we were just kicking ideas around. There was really no set formula. It's like, okay, that sounds about right.
Yeah. I think really the only static ones in this were the fire impact fee, twenty-eight cents per square foot, and the police mitigation, five hundred and five and seventy-six cents per per unit. Those ones don't change.
You can actually get a pretty good idea of what the fees would be because you have that impact fee draft list there and you can just add them up. I didn't do that. I didn't do that, I could do that, um, now and then just kind of add that lot fee and the... Yeah. So for the, since we're talking about that, that's what, page fifty-five? Unless stated otherwise, the, the fees here are all specifically just an, an idea for the THC specifically, correct?
Correct.
So, so the school impact would be forty-four sixty-one?
Yeah, to change that, we would have to get, uh, the school district to kind of be in agreeance with that. They are the one that sets their own impact fees and the administrative fee, so we just adopt what they say to do.
But for, back to tiny home, you're not gonna have a lot of school-age kids in a tiny home. So why would we even be hitting them up with a, uh, with a school impact fee when they wouldn't? This isn't, that, 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 this is not the type of housing that we're looking at, especially if it's gonna be run by one of the religious organizations. Again, that, that's all transient kind of traffic in a place like that.
Yeah, brief conversations I've had, um, with the folks in Bellingham, we actually, um, while back, did take a, a, the building inspector and I went to go check out a tiny home community, um, and...
What did you do?
I'm trying to remember what it's called, I'm sorry. Um, I'll shoot you an email and let you know. But, um, what they were saying was the, the community that they see coming and buying these are, um, often young couples with young children, they're just trying to make ends meet and, you know, it's, it's what they can afford as far as a single-family home when they're not interested in apartment complex sort of lifestyle. So I think we would see children in this case. But I think you, you do get a range of people, of course, and...
Yeah, we're not trying to develop a code for transitional housing, transitional housing particular. We're trying to develop a code for any potential builder that would come in and be interested in a teeny home community and, you know, I could see like starting, families starting out, this being their first, first-time buyers.
I've looked at tiny homes.
Yeah, yeah. There's a whole show on THC of all just teeny homes, teeny home communities, or HTV, right?
Yeah.
I actually own three tiny homes, so.
Do you really?
Truth be told. But they're in the county, and they work there because there's room around them. And lots of parking, lots of open space, but...
How big are the units?
You know what, I had, I had it here with me, but, okay, so, um, the biggest is seventeen by twenty-six.
Okay.
With a little loft up top. The next one is about twelve by twenty, and the next one's more like twenty by twenty.
Okay, those are decent-sized units.
Yeah, they're not bad, but they're not huge.
Are they rentals or?
They're rentals. We call them cabins, but, cause it sounds, to me, that sounds better than tiny home, but basically, that's what it is. But, um, but I, I, there's nothing wrong with tiny homes, I think they're awesome, great concept. Those people that are living there, I, they love it, and, and it's cheap. So it's a great concept, I just don't know about squeezing a whole bunch into one little spot, that, I can't wrap my head around that. But it's, it's probably doable, cause they're out there. I just, I just need to study it some more, I'd see it, I need to see it.
Yeah. Try to get that density way down to kind of try to speak to that, but if it needs to go down further, let me know.
So does anybody have any ideas on when we would do a field trip? Typically, in the past, we've done it after six o'clock or during the day as well. So it depends on people's availability. I know Nicole works, me, I'm pretty flexible, I think you're flexible.
I, I work full-time, but I have half-days on Fridays.
I would force her to clear Friday, um, depending on. Uh, depending on whether I get a ride back to Cedro Wally. If you have a ride back, I will get back around five fifteen. If I don't have a ride, I take the bus, I get back at six forty-five.
Sounds like evening would probably be the best.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I can, uh, I'll put some thoughts together as far as where, um, noting your, uh, recommendation for the spot in Bellingham. But I'll see if there's any others we might want to consider. Um, shoot an email for calendar invite and see what everybody's availability might be for an evening.
Does Family Promise have one that they've organized in the area? Or are they all east coast? When I looked them up, they were east coast.
I don't think within the area, no, so.
Okay, so it sounds like they're moving this way from the other side.
I think you'll need to coordinate with whoever manages these different projects, instead of like a bunch of us just showing up and start staring in people's windows and stuff.
Sure, yeah.
Well, that'd be better.
Yeah.
Oh, it's okay, we're planning commissioners.
We have a badge.
We have a badge or something.
Stickers.
A badge would be okay.
You were, you were, we did the Bothell tour.
Yeah, I set that up, yeah.
Yeah, when, was that a Saturday or something?
No, it was, it was at night, we, uh, yeah, I think we got, we got there at six o'clock, five or six o'clock.
You're right, it was at night and we had dinner at McMenamin's.
Yeah, that was a fun trip.
Yeah. But I digress, I just was trying to remember the logistics on that one.
I'll, I'll work something out, see if we can get someone to agree to let us in.
That trip included beer. We were done with our duties at that point.
So I just tried doing the math, just adding the school impact fee in the fee sheet here. And most of these are, uh, just taking straight from the ADU. So, um, forty-four sixty-one, school impact fee plus the thirty-five admin, plus I just went with the larger, the four hundred and fifty square foot, as the fire, which was fourteen oh four eighty-three, and then the larger for the traffic impact fee, non-CBD twenty-six eighty-two. And then the ERU, also the larger one, fifty-eight seventy-one eighty-six. And then the police impact, or police mitigation fee, five oh five seventy-six, did not put the fire in, which is point twenty-eight per square foot. And it comes out to almost fifteen thousand dollars, if I'm doing the math right.
Per unit?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Per unit.
So in the case of Family Promise, I mean, just even five or six units, you're close to a hundred grand. Yeah.
Cost of doing business, I suppose.
Yeah, well, that, that's exactly what it is, yeah.
Should we close this portion and move on if we've all had our say?
I think we have a lot more work to do.
Yeah, um, is this something where we vote to table it till next month, or what do we do now?
No, would they, I, I would never take, uh, it's only if you, if we're making a motion to do so. To be continued, yeah.
Okay, so we'll close this set portion of the meeting at seven thirty-one and move on to new business, which here says, "Proposed amendments to chapter twelve point four zero Cedro Wally Municipal Code and Cedro Wally Municipal Code seventeen point five zero dot zero seven zero to update tree standards." Would you like to expound?
Thank you. Okay, so these proposed amendments are intended to rectify issues that Public Works and the Planning Department have been having regarding tree plantings. A few major issues are being addressed here. One being trees are being planted way too close to underground utility lines or sidewalks without root barriers, and that's caused, or they have potential to cause damage to those, um, such infrastructure. Some of the current trees currently listed under the city's list of recommended trees do not fit well into their respective categories. So trees listed under small and narrow street trees probably fit better under medium-sized trees based on the, um, maximum height or the maximum trunk diameter. So we see issues with, you know, we've got a small landscape strip and someone stuck a medium tree in there and suddenly it's become way too large for its spot. Trees planted within landscape strips adjacent to sidewalks are also, um, un, un, often underneath overhead utility lines, and the recommended trees list doesn't account well for the maximum height under those utility lines. So often trees will start growing into the power lines and pose a fire hazard. City crews have to go out on a regular basis and trim them back so that, make sure that there's no damage or prevent fires. It's sticky, so we thought we would need to clean this up, it's about time. So the draft regulations presented to you today are intended to remedy these things. As you'll see, we reworked the recommended tree section to include more trees that are more fitting for each category. Included minimum landscape strip widths for each to clarify where those trees belong. We added the note UT to those trees suitable to be planted underneath overhead utility lines. Added the requirement that root barriers are to be installed within five feet of a pedestrian walkway, that includes sidewalks, and/or within five feet of an underground utility line. That addition was also made to chapter seventeen fifty landscaping, just to make sure we have this and all the applicable areas of the code, make sure it doesn't get missed. We want to make sure that planning staff can properly review landscape plans and prevent the issues that I've described, and ensure that city crews can use their time more productively, not having to constantly go out and trim hazard trees. So I ask that we hold a discussion on the proposed amendments and have the planning commission recommend any changes you see necessary.
Where did you get the list of trees from a regular horticulturist? Did we get a consultant in for, for this? I mean, it just wasn't just pulled off, uh, you know?
I honestly don't know.
Okay. Did we use somebody else's code on this?
Are you talking the original code?
No, I'm talking about where, where we got this updated list of, uh...
That was just off my, my research on, you know.
Okay.
And Isaacs as well, I guess, uh, he'd talked to, what was it? Mark Freiberger and Nathan Salzina both had a recommended individual that, um, specializes in landscape architecture and whatnot, and, uh, said, talk to him and see about recommended trees for these, so. I apologize, I don't rec, remember the name right now of that individual, but...
Who, who's responsible for keeping them all trimmed, the homeowners or the city or?
Um, so typically, the, the trees in the right of way are the responsibility of the adjacent homeowner. But sometimes those people don't have the equipment necessary to get up crazy high into the tree and cut back where the power lines are. They're, um, I think, um, PSE does offer, um, that if, if they do find that it is a hazard, they'll come out and chop, chop the tree for you as necessary to trim it back, just so it's not a hazard. But, um, yes, it is the adjacent property owner's responsibility typically. But in the case that there isn't a adj, adjacent homeowner, then, then usually Nathan goes out and does it, or has, you know, delegates it, but, yeah.
How would the new standard impact homeowners who, you know, like we, we mentioned Ferry Street already, where there's a lot of trees lining that street, many of which go right up into those power lines? Does, are we going to start enforcing then that if those trees don't fall within a species type that should be under UT, that they need to replace them or cut them down?
I feel that that would only become a case where it's, you know, constantly a hazard type of thing, and we get enough complaints about one, then we'll say, okay, now it's about time to do it. But I think this kind of falls under the non-conforming existing use category a little bit. Those, I know a lot of people are very close to those Ferry Street trees, and they love them, so, um, I don't know how exactly we would handle this. It's a little bit different from your, yeah. It's a little different from your typical existing non-conforming use. Typically, you're talking structures, lots, things like that. But when you're talking these sorts of things where it's starting to get into the public safety issues, then it might be a little bit more touchy. It's an interesting thought, I'm really, I don't know.
Cause as soon as it becomes part of the code, it becomes something that can be enforced, right?
So.
There's like a grandfather clause, like, you know, cause a lot of the homes, and especially in town, like my home was built nineteen oh three. You know, so I'm sure a lot of those streets, like Ferry and Talcott, and, yeah, have got some really old trees that go along with that old home, probably before the power line was there.
Yeah, I think, uh, and at that point, we would start referencing, referencing the nuisance code, um, if, if we find there have been enough complaints, like, okay, this tree's gotta go. There are other code sections that we can reference as well, where it's like, okay, this tree is, um, dying, it's obviously diseased, things like that, where we can go out there and say, okay, we have enough to say, it has to go, but...
How many times does that happen, uh, that you've?
Not since I've been here, three years, so, I mean, we've had the occasional, you know, someone's just tired of taking care of the trees, they keep dropping limbs, but, you know, with, with the significant ones, like I haven't had anyone come to me about the Ferry Street trees and complain about them.
I could just see somebody tripping on the sidewalk, because Talcott especially.
Yeah.
All of a sudden, it's like, I'm gonna sue you because your tree tripped me and...
So my understanding is this type of code is not retroactive, like you're saying. It's, it's just going forward, making sure that there's root barriers and that these, the smaller trees are categorized correctly and the larger trees are categorized correctly. And then, as you said, if there's, it's, actually, probably the trip hazard is more of the issue than even the power lines, cause PSE, like you said, has, will trim them or they'll get trimmed somehow, you know? But, yeah, that trip hazard, um, and of course, they'll sue typically the homeowner and the city, you know? Cause it's like, did the city know and did they do anything about it? Who's, who's, even if the homeowner's responsible, that's usually how it goes. So.
Really, with the intention here, as far as I'm concerned, was to try to tackle future development, for sure. Cause, yeah, no, it's, I find plans that were approved by my predecessor and utility lines are within two feet of a large tree, and I'm like, oh, this should, never should have been approved this way, but, you know, it's already planted and, yeah, I have to go out there and be like, hey, can you take that tree out? And, you know, move it or something, it's, it gets sticky, so.
It's, it's a smart thing to do, I've, you know, got little kids and we ride our bikes on the streets and it's, there's a lot of sidewalks that you can't, you know, go down because of the tree roots have really just destroyed the sidewalks, so it's smart.
And it's often city dollars that get spent on having to re, redo them. I mean, we do have a, a, what's it, the sidewalk program, so though the sidewalk is the adjacent property owner's responsibility, we do provide materials to kind of help them along and, and labor as well, so. Yeah, city dollars being spent, so I'm like, this'll help to reduce that, city crews going out and having to fix the problems.
Yeah, yeah.
The thing too is when you're requiring, uh, certain landscaping to be planted, you don't want it to die.
Right.
How many times do you see new development and all of a sudden the tree's dead within a year, just for whatever reasons?
It needs enough space for the roots to establish themselves, so if you stick in a, you know, large tree in a medium-sized space, it's not gonna do well.
Well, those grates are good ideas too, I mean, I've seen them in other jurisdictions, they, they seem to work really well. They look nice too.
Commissioner Devine, you wanna say anything about trees?
I was, I'm not impressed. But I was very impressed with the listed trees in each category. I do know from a personal standpoint, I am totally getting my bike over root barrier roots. Calling it, I'm, I'm going on the sidewalk. I'm impressed with the diagrams. The root burial, what is in material of root burial? If the root barrier, what is it in material as a root barrier?
Let's see.
Is it metal?
Know that right off the top of my head. So, root barriers shall be rigid, high-impact polypropylene treated with UV inhibitors. What that means, I don't know. That is public works stuff.
It just must be pretty durable material to stop a tree root, so imagine that's probably not that cheap. Um, but, um, I think it's necessary.
Thank you.
What, what action do you want from us? Just to review this or is there some kind of?
If you see anything that needs changed, you know, we know, but.
Yeah, we, we could either study trees for a month or.
You do what I did.
Google it.
So, what, what I tried to do is kind of work in, you know, how, uh, the canopy width, how wide does that go? So, is that fitting for, you know, a street tree? Is it gonna be bushy, vision clearance, that sort of thing? You know, we do have the vision clearance triangle requirement, you know, don't plant anything that's gonna be blocking at intersections and things like that. But, um, you know, again, trying to prevent city crews from going to have to come out and make sure, you know, "Oh, a street sweeper can't get by here because there is this big bush in the way," right? So, you know, something for those, um, small and narrow street trees, something that's gonna be more vertical, but at the same time, not tall enough to, uh, get in the way of overhead utility lines. And just kind of trying to find examples of trees that would better fit the categories here, so. Yeah, be my guest to double check my work, but I did do my best to kind of find things that were more fitting for those categories.
The only, my only encounter with trees in new developments is when they get too wide, too fast and they're too low. So, you're driving down the road like through Klingerfield and your antenna is getting whipped by.
Yeah.
And so, you, you wanna stop and cut a few branches off. And then, um, the reason I asked who's responsible is because a lot of times, they, they are nuisance just to the drivers. And I don't know if the city's supposed to be maintaining them or the property owner there or what. But, and then on that brand new one, um, Trail, Trail North or whatever they call it, those start growing huge right off the get-go and they're growing over the road already. But there's, not supposed to park on the side of the road, but people do. But, anyway, I just see these bushy ones coming in way too short and way too fat, so I don't know what they are.
I was just gonna ask you, kind of to, Commissioner for that's point. I don't see actually anything in here that, other than it can't, you know, block your vision. It doesn't say anything about minimum, uh, height from the ground that branches can start. I mean, when you're limiting how tall they are, they do, could get more bushy than you have the other problem. That, yeah, I mean, we walk around town a lot and ducking under trees along the sidewalk is pretty normal. So, either they're jacking up the sidewalk from the roots or you're ducking under them from the low branches.
Right, right.
And that's if they're not too tall and in the power lines.
Yeah, um, the design standards and guidelines manual actually has that kind of written within it. I think it's anywhere between, no, what is it? This is mostly for, uh, screen, landscape screening areas, but, um, anywhere between three and, I wanna say eight, six? Three and six feet, something like that. It has to be clear, uh, for vision purposes. But, um, yeah, if that's something we want to add in, I can, I can add that, you know? Let's see. Maybe under planting standards, I could put something in there.
I, it just made me think of it with under seventeen fifty seventy, minimum landscape material specifications. It reminded me of, that, that sounds like other, other standards there that are, would be in, you know? You're saying it's in our design standards, which this is the code, but sounds similar.
Yeah, I didn't include the design standards in this, but, um, landscape material specification. Yeah, this is more for, or seventeen fifty is more for at, at initial installation. So, I feel like it would be a better fit for the planting standard section in twelve forty, just personally, but.
I would just add another item under twelve forty, one thirty. Is that what?
Yeah, that's the section I'm looking at.
Actually, looking at the, um, menu there in twelve forty, it says trimming over hanging trees, duty of property owner.
Oh.
Okay. Trying to work out kind of a draft statement. Mature trees shall be trimmed.
Well, I don't, I don't want to put you on the spot. If we've got something in the design standards that we can just copy paste in here, that would be perfectly fine. And that way, it just matches, kind of like what we're already doing with taking the root barrier requirement, which was in the Public Works, uh, what was it in with the street? Standards and then putting it in the code.
Yeah.
No, back to planting standards, I, I run into this just even putting real estate signs in, where we're now required to have the utilities come out and actually mark exactly where the utility lines are. You really wouldn't know if you had underground utilities unless you actually called the utility itself to come out and, uh, show you where things are at. A lot of times, yeah, they're, they're underground, especially in new construction that goes right underground, typically in the front yard.
Yeah.
Do we want to put some kind of language in there that, that they have to mark the utilities so we know where it's at?
Well, as part of the permitting process, I do require as part of the checklist that they show me where existing utilities are. So, they'd be doing that already.
That, that should be part of, uh, requirement for any new construction, right? Or additions where you require a site plan and that shows.
Right, anything that requires a site plan.
Right.
Would anyone like to make a motion on what to do with this bit of information?
Well, you would have put that in, in her, if she wanted an action to make a motion, it would have been on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah. Today, I just wanted to discuss and see if you wanted any changes. We have the one here, so I'm happy to bring it back with that change made. We'll go and discuss that the next time. And, uh, we can see about doing a public hearing at the next meeting if, if the Planning Commission's comfortable with that.
That's what she always does. So, she'll do like a memo like this and then on the, the end of it, they'll, they'll tell us what they, they're looking up for us to do. And in this particular case, it was just a discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're, we're good.
I thought it was right here.
Yeah, right there. And that's, would be at the end of it.
Okay, if it's the beginning, it doesn't.
Right. They'll recommend what the action is.
Okay.
This was just to take a look at it.
Has everyone had a chance to talk about this? Any more thoughts before we look to move on? Okay, well, new business of, uh, discussing tree standards is done at seven fifty-two. Is there anything else before we look for an adjournment? Anything, did you want to say anything about any new employees or you already done that?
I didn't get a chance to put it on the agenda.
Okay, so, nope. None of that. Anybody, anyone? Last chance. Anyone want to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Fatisi makes a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Sexton.
Any further discussion?
Any further discussion before we adjourn? Do we have to say all in favor of adjourning? All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
We are done at seven fifty-three. Yay.